If you would please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the black, the right states of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome and thank you. We will start with our mindfulness session. Tori, if you would.
If you want to find a comfortable seat. We're just gonna take a minute to get ready from where we've come from and governing for the better of our community. So you can just take a deep breath in and straighten up. And on the exhale, just settle in. Take a deep breath in, straighten up. Exhale, settle in. And just find a regular breathing pattern. Some say that our mind, our thoughts can sometimes convince our body to carry the weight of its worries. So as you're breathing in and out, on your inhale, see if you can notice where your body tends to carry the worries or the stress of your days, whether it's in your shoulders or your hands. As you breathe in, see if you can find that spot. And on your exhale, breathe in some softness and some letting go into that spot. Breathing in awareness of some tight spaces and exhaling into them, space and softness, relaxation. And on your next exhale, you can bring yourself back into the room.
Thank you. Uh, so agenda review and adjustments. We've got a couple, anybody, anything? Okay, um, so we have a teacher nomination to go if we can insert it into seven, section seven B, right after the asset protection. And I would like to request, if you don't mind moving the, uh... Just make sure that the right section here. Uh, yes, the advocate for legislative change, section nine D up under public comment, so that we do that first and let our esteemed guests be on their way. Got any, Jay, we don't need a motion for that? Or we move that one?
No, as long as it's adopted by unanimous consent, you're all set.
Any concerns? All right, so we will do those two. Um, to start, we'll do our, as usual, focus on learning. Sean, turn it over for an intro.
Yep, and I would just like to introduce and reintroduce Kirsten Colgard, our director of curriculum and English language learning. And she has brought some students with her as well, and she's gonna talk a little bit about the English language learning programs in our district.
Thanks, Sean. So as I was putting together this presentation, I really had to hold myself back 'cause there's so many good things going on right now with the ELL programs in the district that I could go on all night. Um, but so I tried to reserve it and, and just, you know, hit a couple key points and, and address what's going on K to twelve. And I was lucky to be able to recruit some of our middle, middle school students that have been working in their ELL class on their present, reading and presentation skills. So tonight, they're gonna be reading some poetry that some that they have written and some that they ha- um, that have been written by other authors that they'll be pr- um, that they've been practicing their presentation skills with. So I'd like to start by introducing Tabarik Abdul Salam.
Hi, I'm Tabarik Abdul Salam from the seventh grade. I read What Makes Weather. What makes mo- mo- sorry. What makes weather, do you know? What makes rain, sleet, and snow? What makes summer warm and breezy? What makes winter cold and sneezy? What makes autumn crisp and keen? What makes spring so warm and green? I know, I know, what makes weather? Lots of things that work together. Wind and water, earth's rotation, bring the season to each nation. So now we all know what makes weather? Lots of things that work together. I read a poem about me. I'm a sister, I'm a daughter, I'm a student. I'm a girl, I'm a human. I'm from family, I'm from the world. I'm from the heaven, I'm from everywhere. I'm alive from the universe. I read a poem about my friend Hussein. Hussein, handsome, understands English and Arabic. Soccer player, stands up for what he believes in. Eat pizza with hot sauce, ice skating. Uh, never, never gives up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Hussein Al Maran.
Hey, my name is Hussein and I'm in sixth grade. I'm reading a poem about, about sick. "I cannot go to school today," said Little Piggy in my cave. "I have the measles in my mouth, a gash, a rash, a purple bumps. My mouth is wet, my throat is dry, I'm going blind in my right eye. My tonsils are as big as rocks. I have counted sixteen chicken pox, and there's one more, that's seventeen. And don't you think my face looks green? My leg is cut, my eyes are blue. It may be an septic flu. I cough and sneeze, I gasp and choke. I'm sure that my left leg is broke. Uh, my hip hurts when I move. My chin, my belly button's caving in. My back is worned, my ankles sprain, my bandicue pains. Each time it rains. My nose is cold, my throat is dry. Uh, my voice is weak. I have a sliver in my si- wait. When I speak, my tongue is falling off my mouth. I think my hair is falling out. My elbows bend, my spin aren't straight. My temperature is one oh eight, my brain is shock. I cannot hear, there is a hole inside my ear. I have a hangnail in my hi- my, my heart is... What, what's that, what's that you say? You say today's Saturday, goodbye, I'm going out to play." Tabarik, teach other patiently, amazing at math, beautiful artist, reader, reader, ice skater, kind to all.
Thank you. So we have a couple more presenters for the end. You're gonna have to put up with me in the middle. But I, I wanted to start off with just telling you a little bit about what's going on at JFK Elementary. Um, at the elementary school, the ELL teachers, one of their big focuses is content-based learning. And right now, this is, um, just some work that the second graders have done. The second grade, uh, class, ELL class, has been working on learning about community. And so they've been learning about how to be a community. And it was really, uh, interesting to find out how many ninjas are in our JFK community. So there were, you know, you might be able to spot a couple here. There were, you know, a few of them poking out. Um, and I just, I really, this was one piece I wanted to share. What a part of being a community is that everyone shares. We share together, so this was the dialogue that two students came up with. Do you want cake? Thank you for the cake. So they're really getting to, you know, getting to understand what a community is and also building community at the same time. And by learning about that content that's part of their literacy work, um, they're really gaining language through content. So another piece with the content is, um, the first grade class is learning about life cycles. And, uh, they were working on the life cycles of a frog, so they started with a KWL chart, which stands for know, want to know, and learn. So usually at the beginning of a unit, a teacher, um, will go through with students and figure out what, what things do you know about frogs? And then what questions do you have? What do you want to know? And then at the end, they can circle back and, you know, recognize what they've learned. So that's another example of the content-based language learning that they're doing at JFK. On the right, you can't see it that well. That's another, um, fourth and fifth grade classroom that's been working on, uh, poetry, not, um, in a different kind of style than what the middle school has been doing. In addition to that content-based language learning, a lot of what the JFK ELL teachers do is, um, helps, helps students learn about the US culture. So some, um, in some ways, they've done that. Uh, on the right is a picture of the fun fair. Every year, the, um, the ELL teachers at JFK make sure that all the new ELL students get to go to the fun fair. So everybody gets to go at least once. It's a, it's really helpful, not stressful, because it's a ton of fun, but it really helps build background knowledge. So it helps students, um, you know, understand what a, what a fair is, that idea of playing games and, and raffles and things like that. Because those things, all of that background knowledge comes into play when you're reading books. And if you don't have an idea of what those things are, it's harder for you to access the text. So they do a lot of, um, cultural immersion to try and build background knowledge. Another thing, um, in the poster on the left, in the top, those pictures are of, uh, trick-or-treating. They took all of the first grade ELL students trick-or-treating this year. And it, it was a great time, the kids had a ball. Um, and they really, you know, they got to learn about Halloween and what that is, because again, that's just background knowledge that they, um, they didn't have before. And then on the bottom, um, there's a bunch of pictures of, uh, students that they worked with at, um, from St. Michael's College. Every year for, I think, at least six years now, um, students from St. Michael's have been coming from the freshman year seminar, it's called Peace and Justice. Their freshman year seminar focuses on the refugee experience and, and what that means for peace and justice around the world. And so they, once a week, all semester, they get to come and work with some of our ELL students. And they get to do, you know, one-on-one math and reading work, which is a huge help for our students. And it's really great to see the gains that they make just with that short amount of time each week, having that one-on-one exposure that teachers can't necessarily give. And then at the end, the culminating, uh, activity at the end of the semester is they get to go on a field trip to St. Michael's and check out the college and learn about the college and have fun with their buddies. And the kids, you know, talk about having the buddies that they've met and talk about them for years and talk about that experience. So it's, it's really powerful and it helps build that, that interest in college from a very young age. Uh, so additionally, at JFK, they do a lot of math support. Um, with our, uh, with our math program, the ELL teachers push in and deliver math support in the classroom with a classroom teacher. So that's on the left, two teachers, an ELL teacher and a content classroom teacher in the third grade working together to support the students. And then on the right, um, that's one of our homeschool liaisons, Lon Nguyen. She is our Vietnamese liaison and she's also a certified math teacher. So she provides amazing math support to students that are, you know, um, need extra numeracy support when they first come into the US. And then, I'm gonna skip over the middle school 'cause they're gonna talk about that. Um, but at the high school, there are a lot of great things going on right now as well. Um, Seed Folks, the book on the left, is a book that Becky Savage, uh, one of our ELL teachers is using in her ELL three course. We have ELL levels one through five that sort of, um, uh, that coordinate with the WEDA access test scores. So right now, this is, um, one of her intermediate groups is working with Seed Folks, which is a book that's used in the ninth grade humanities curriculum. The ELL teachers made a great effort to really try to align their curriculum with the humanities curriculum so that students are, you know, getting to learn, um, getting to learn things and work with grade level materials. Um, so this is a great book that, um, shows a variety of stories about one plot of land in, um, in an urban area and how different, um, different neighbors in the community interact with that one plot of land to make seeds grow. Um, have you girls read it? Yeah, so Rainbow, what do you think?
Um, yeah, it's a really community-based book. And, um, uh, we read it last year in our humanities class and I think that it's a good representation of, uh, a community that has different kinds of perspectives and ethnicities.
Thanks. So one thing that, um, she's gonna be doing is having her class build a River Folks book, you know, in connection to the Winuski River, so that we can build a community book of stories, you know, for, uh, that show that, you know, show the different perspectives, as Rainbow said, of our, our different ethnicities in our community. So, and then on the right is, um, another class, Nellie Mailey and Ingo White, co-teacher, Newcomer Academy. And they've been, uh, this year, they're building a website that it would, um, the web, the website they're building would be, it's like an introductory website so that if another new student came into the district, they could take a look at that website and learn everything that they need to know about, um, about the Winuski School District, about the, um, you know, the US public school system, the community, all kinds of things. So they've really been adding to and building their websites in that class. And then, I know I showed this picture to you last month with Parental Engagement, 'cause I was talking about a beer, our new Arabic-speaking liaison. But I wanted to go back and share, um, the Newcomer Academy has, uh, the, uh, in December, they had a big presentation, um, around research that they had been doing. And the research they did was on different cultural holidays from around the world. And they also compiled a book of recipes, uh, where they each cooked a dish, brought it in, and then they had to write up the recipes, uh, step by step. So it was, um, a nice sequential writing project. And I thought you might be interested, so I brought copies. There's a lot of great recipes in here. So again, um, a lot of language work went into this for them to be able to tell it sequentially and, you know, write it out. And also just a lot of community building, a lot of, you know, making those connections with the, the greater Winuski community. And in addition to, um, all of that, there's other great things going on in the higher-level ELL classes. Bill Clark has, um, been doing an Introduction to Communications course and, that does a lot of research in presenting and really works on, um, developing students' independent presentation skills. And it's been great to stop into his classroom and see what they're able to do in literature circles, completely independently, and, um, presenting to the class. And then, um, also, Ingo White is teaching a, a college credit class through CCV that's, um, kind of, uh, preparing our ELL students for career and college readiness. And they get, uh, CCV credit. So there's a lot of great things going on. And again, I only had the picture of Lon tonight, but I just have to say, we couldn't do any of it without our liaisons. That's a huge part of our ELL program, they do so much for us. And now, I have a couple more presenters from Winuski Middle School. Suzmita Rai, would you like to come up?
Um, hi, I'm Suzmita, I'm in seventh grade. I read poem of Nepal, I'm from Nepal. I'm from the sound of fairy bluebird. I'm from the smell of moth when it was red. I'm from Nepal. I'm from the taste of spicy panipuri. I'm from the Nepal. I'm from the sight of blue isle mountain. I'm from the city of the Magchapa.
And Siddhartha Deha?
Hi, my name is Siddhartha, I'm in sixth grade. And I'm gonna tell my point about I come from Asia. I come from the sound of home on the road. I come from the smell of jasmine and rose fan. I come from the taste of chicken soup. I come from the India, I come from the sight of China border in the distant. I come from huts in the mountain, I come from the fam- feeling of families. I come from place called Nidhur. And rain, the rain is raining all around. It falls on fields and trees. It rain on the umbrella here and on the zip at sea. White snow, the snow is white and clean. It makes a lovely sign. It cover cars and tree and street and makes the world go hoarse. It look so very pretty, you need a turn to spice.
Okay, so would you all like to come up now and talk a little bit about the ELL programs? Come on up!
Nothing to be bashful about.
If you have any questions, you can ask us. Um, we're in Miss Ruin ELL class and she's a nice teacher and we have Miss Akaba. And Miss Ruin is not here, Miss Akaba help us to do the work. And they help us in, at math too. And when they come at, at, when we have a math class and Mr. Foreman class, they come to help us if we don't, if we don't know any works. And if we need any help, they help us. And at ELL, we have two class. We have Ribon eighty. We, we, we learn English from the Ribon eighty and we have three apps to, like, learn Ribon eighty. There's, uh, called reading plus Core Five and Roski.
And, um, last year, we had a teacher, to her name is Miss, um, Miss Deboz, she was a nice teacher too. She helped us the first, when we came, when we came. The first, um, she helped us about reading and it's like the same as like this year too.
Um, Miss Deboz is from, uh, ZK ELL teacher. And when we come here, she was the ELL teacher to teach us the English. And we were, we were working together at, at the English class and math class. We did same thing like within, uh, middle school, ELL teachers. So we have the same thing going on, day on day. So we're learning more English than we do last, we do, like, we know more English than we do.
Hussein, how long have you been studying English?
Um, like, one year and then, one year and eight months.
Yeah. What about you, Subba, how long have you been studying English?
Um, two years and like, two months.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, great. And Suzmita?
Oh, one year.
One year? Tell her.
Um, six months.
Six, six months. That is great. Yeah, you guys are a very impressive bunch. Yeah, very good. Do you take your English home and teach your parents?
Yeah, we, we tell them our website and sometime they learn the website. Um, there's my dad and he go to my website and he, they try to learn English too. My mom do same thing and my grandpa too.
Thanks for sharing. And I just have to tell you, when we were practicing tonight, before they came in, I was asking them, you know, like, presentation skills and strategies, what, what they know about, you know, how to present. And the first thing they said was mindfulness. Before you go in to present, practice mindfulness. Any questions for me?
I fully expected to hear the answer for them, how long they've been, uh, learning English, to be over three years. Based on what I, based on what I'm hearing. So you guys have come a long way in a short time. You've done very, very well.
Yeah.
I certainly wouldn't be speaking your languages that quickly if I was, if I had your answers. I mean, I'm still learning English. You know, it's amazing.
Kirsten, are you feeling like the ELL program is pretty well-supported right now? That you, that you've got most of what you need?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm really, you know, excited that we were able to add additional, an additional position to the budget.
Yeah.
Um, I think that will really help support the elementary school and the Facebooks there.
Yeah.
Um, we're still, you know, we're looking at exactly what that position might look like.
Yeah.
Um, but it'll definitely be able to, you know, support the other ELL teachers. Uh, one concern that Sean and I talked about is, you know, space constraints.
Yeah.
You know, in the district overall, sometimes we get trouble finding the space for all the classrooms.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that's one concern that we're always thinking about is, is ways to make the space flexible so that we can, you know, provide adequate services for all of our students. And I, we could use a thousand more liaisons, but... You know, and I'm looking like, a beer is a, a half-time position this year, but I'm hoping to make her a full-time position for grant funding next year because she's just such a, already, you know, she's only been here since November and she's such a vital part of our organization, so...
I really like seeing how, um, the curriculum's being aligned to what everyone's studying so that it seems like it's, it's, it's very well-coordinated.
Mm-hmm.
So there's not always new learning area to move to a certain building or a certain grade or, it seems like... They, you know, you guys could even describe how the, um, continuity from JFK into the middle school is, was great.
Yeah, that's really important. There's a lot of collaboration that goes on between the ELL and the, and the content teachers here because there has to be. Um, and so that kind of support. And another thing, like, since you were asking, you know, um, things that we always need more of, too, are time, space and time. You know, just, it's just more planning time. And, and we're looking at ways to make, you know, to, to flex the schedule so that we can provide that planning time for ELL and, and content teachers. They have some, but, you know, sometimes they just need more to be able to really make that continuity work. Because it is very, you know, if, if you're moving from one space for one teacher to another and you don't have that continuity in the language that's being used and the content, then there's just a fracture. So really trying to make that consistent is really important.
The one-school comment is what gets me. We're all under one roof, right? The one-school mentality is a little harder to reach. It sounds like that's starting to take root.
Yeah, I think it is.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Kirsten.
Thanks very much.
Good to see you again.
Yeah, me too. Do you want me to leave this up, Sean?
Uh, yeah, it's probably right there, thanks.
Take care.
And thank you guys for coming in in the evening here. Appreciate it. All right, so public comments. I understand we have a public comment tonight?
Yes.
Welcome.
My name is, uh, Leighton Hill. I'm the chair of Winuski Dollars for Scholars. And what we do is we raise money for scholarships for Winuski High School graduates. And I wanna tell you our story and, um, and go from there, tell you where we are, what we're doing, and, uh... And, uh, so, um, I made a little infographic to, um, to kind of tell the story for Winuski Dollars for Scholars. Um, Winuski graduates achieve. Uh, as you can see, there are, um, five numbers down here. Number forty-three, number twenty-three, eighteen thousand, twenty, and one. Does anyone have, does anyone, uh, know what any of these numbers mean?
Can I take the easy one? Eighteen K is gotta be how much you raise in a year.
Uh, no, no, it isn't. It's how much we give.
Give.
Yeah, yeah, how much we give. What about, what else?
Sorry about the...
Any other ones? So one of these, everybody should know here, on the school board. Forty-three, what's that?
The number of students that get scholarships?
No, the number of graduates last spring from Winuski High School. But, number twenty-three is the number of scholarships that we gave out last year, which is really kind of amazing.
Yeah.
So more than half the students who graduate from Winuski High School get scholarships. Uh, and, uh, which is really extraordinary. It's higher than, than anybody else in the state. Um, and, uh, and then twenty, uh, let's see. Number one is, we're number one in diversity in the state. And I think that's something that we are really proud of. And, uh, and, um, it's really kind of awesome, especially when we think about how many students are, um, having either post-secondary education or going into some sort of vocational training, which we also give scholarships for. We also, not only give scholarships, give scholarships, but we also give, uh, money toward things like the, uh, things going on in the I-Lab. Or with business students, they wanted to go to a conference last year. We gave the money for them to go to the conference. Uh, so we do a number of these kinds of things. And twenty is, I'm, I'm having a, a brain fart. And, um, you know what, I can't remember what. Oh, twenty, I know what twenty is. We've been around for twenty years.
Oh.
Can you believe it? Twenty years! Twenty years! It's kind of really amazing. Winuski Dollars Scholars has been giving scholarships for twenty years to, to high, Winuski High, to high school graduates. Now, one of the reasons why I'm coming here today is because we're at a critical point. We're down to three board members with one board member leaving at the end of this year. None of these board members have children in the school. Last year, we didn't raise any money. We're at a point where Winuski Dollars for Scholars could disappear. And we need your help. We need your help to help recruit new board members, if you know people in the community. We need your help helping us um, uh, build fundraising. Right now, what we're doing is we're, uh, we're meeting with different organizations and companies in the area. We're also organizing what we're calling a restaurant walk in Winuski during a week in um, in May. Uh, where um, the restaurants, restaurants will donate twenty percent, uh, or ten percent of their um, of their gross sales for a certain hours of an evening during that week. And we'll, we're, we're starting with around the circle and we're moving up into other, other um, restaurants in the area as well uh, to kind of build community. Uh, and we want to do that and we're trying, and we're working, um, we're in discussion and working with it uh, in conjunction with SITA. Uh, so that that happens, so that also what we can do is help bring the artwork uh, from the students here at the high school into a number of the restaurants and not just at the O'Brien Center. And so we're really trying to build community, we're trying to do this, but we really can't do it alone. Uh, it's, it's really too much. And so I'm here today because I want to tell you that um, Winuski Dollars for Scholars is doing awesome things and we wanted to do awesome things for another twenty years. Is there any questions uh, that you have for me? Uh, the brochure tells our story and also lists all the scholarships, including the um, school board scholarship that uh, that we co, um, that, that uh, that we collaborate with you on.
How did you give so much money without raising it?
We had some in our money. We had, we had, we have some in our, in our bank account. We're down though to uh, twenty-three thousand dollars now. So it'll be, so we're gonna give a little less this spring than we did the year before. And we're hoping that we'll, we'll get more funding happening, one, from the restaurant walk and two, from soliciting to different organizations. And if you have any ideas of who we should talk to and contacts, please let us know. Uh, our website is on, um, is, is on the brochure, you can contact us through that. You can also contact us through Sean. Uh, you know, he, you know, Sean has been terrific in um, in support for us. And um, that's about it.
And we greatly appreciate the work that you guys do and as, as the parent of multiple recipients of some of the Dollars for Scholars money, it helps with books, it helps with computers.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So in order to help plug anybody watching that wants to get involved, winuski dot dollars for scholars dot org.
Thank you, thank you.
Get involved.
Great, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. And so now, if we could, Clem and Deanna, if you guys want to come up, nine D will move up um, underneath. And so we started this last year. Um, we invited our, our local legislators in and we kind of adopted this as we adopted the policy governance model um, in our annual agenda planning tool to get with our legislators before the uh, session gets fully into, into swing. And I think this year is as important as any to have you guys in here and understand where we're coming from so that uh, as a, both a district and a community. So there are a lot of pushes with regards to both education funding and the funding formula. So, and, and consolidation. So I think to start, um, I, I just, did, did you get the um, package of the consolidation that I had passed along that we had done previously?
Boundary study.
Boundary study?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and Jay had, had done a lot of work with the team on that to go through. And Tori, yes, Tori, so. I, I guess if, if I could, do you have a kind of a high level of where you see things so far?
Uh, Pat, first, I, I ran a list of all the uh, House Education Bills. Uh, I forgot to run the Senate portion, but uh, those are what, as of this noon, that were on the wall in the Education Committee. Uh, having lunch with uh, David Sharp, the Chair of the Education Committee, uh, he's gonna be pushing consolidation. And he's gonna try to find money to uh, uh, help some of the things that aren't happening now. One of, one of the big things, a big turnover uh, in the Education, House Education Committee. Shap Smith, uh, the Speaker, uh, took people from Ways and Means, uh, Procreation, so. Anybody dealing with money. He was bringing in people from these various committees and assigning them to the education. So there's a, a well-rounded base of knowing how the money moves in Montpelier. Uh, so uh, this ought to be a, a, a big help. We're gonna get something out this year. What it is at this stage of the game, I don't know. Uh, there's a, you know, uh, Shap asked for proposals from the public back late in the fall. He received over a hundred different proposals. Uh, the Education Committee looked at all one hundred. Today, they're in the process taking good pieces from this bill, that bill and so forth, and they're working to come up with, what they hope is gonna be a bill that solves our problems, or a lot of our problems. So they're spending a lot of time reviewing what's, what's taking place.
That's great.
Yeah, I, I send it up really well.
Do you have a sense of what um, what the gentleman's drive is for consolidation? Is it sort of main justifications and the way he sees it?
It's, he thinks there's benefits there that we need to capitalize on. Uh, he thinks there's gonna be some savings. Probably not the year, first year or two, but give us a few years to get it under our belt and, and make the adjustments.
Yeah.
Uh, that we had a s, hopefully see some reductions in property taxes down the road.
Oh, so it's primarily a cost concern?
Well, yeah, the, yeah.
Well, Rebecca Holcomb also um, looks at the educational benefits, particularly at the high school level.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but uh, at some of the smaller districts across the state, even at the elementary school level, you know, there, it's um, there can be grades of five students. And so um, when we look at organized sports or having, um, if you're the only girl in your class, um, and you're, you're the only girl, girl in your class for three years, four years, um, that also has an, an impact on your socialization and, and your education. Um, and so uh, that's a big, a big thing that she's, she's pushing is how when there are larger numbers of students for our smaller districts across the state than we have here, then it can, it increase educational opportunities uh, for students.
Jay, did you have?
Um, well, it's just, you know, again, we've been seeing some of the tits and tats from the V S B A, some of the bills that are going out. I have to say that, that's, you know, one of the ones that I've seen this year, which is talking about supervisory districts um, and that type of thing is, is a lot better for Winuski than just a blanket saying under twelve hundred students, we're gonna merge you with somebody else. Um, if you look at our consolidation report and look at the local tax rates of the communities around us, for us to merge with them, you guys, the resulting increase to the local taxpayer would be catastrophic. Um, I'm just, I'm sure you're already aware of this, but I just want to be very clear. Um, you know, with certain districts around us, it's a little less. Milton is close. Colchester's more of a stone's throw. You talk about some of the other districts and the, the difference in the tax rates are, you know, we're not talking a few pennies, we're talking twenty, thirty cents. So, you know, as our representatives, you know, I leave it in your capable hands, but the data's pretty clear. The consolidation study, and it's not the first one we've done, but it's very clear. We are a K-12 district, we are a supervisory district, we're all in one building. You know, the economies of scale, I don't think are there for this particular district. I do believe, and this is my final board meeting after ten years, and I believed this for a while and I still believe this, that there are real benefits for us collaborating with other districts. I think our children can get access to programming and services and things like that. And, and other districts can benefit from, from having collaboration with us, but as far as straight out merger, that's a poor idea. Um, and, and basically that's what our survey comes out and says. Um, you know, we know in certain terms that there are tons of challenges to it, uh, for this particular district. Um, so I guess I would support legislation where one size doesn't fit all. And I've seen those exact words.
Yep.
People are talking the same language.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, again, I'll leave it up to you, but yeah, you know, go, go with that information and, you know, vote how you think is right.
Well, if you see something, let us know one way or the other. Just to make sure we're all on, on the same page. And, cause things happen quick. I mean, I, I sit on Transportation, Deanna sits on uh, Housing, General Military Affairs. We don't probably see a, a bill that's coming to the floor till a day before it arrives. So if you, if you're aware of something, don't hesitate to send us an email, call us. Uh, and you know, we can get you guys down there if you want to come down and testify. Uh, that doesn't hurt at times. And uh, so you know, feel free to use us.
Yep.
The current House bill, you guys, looks really good. And even the small schools grants they're talking about getting rid of wouldn't really impact Winuski because we're large, you know. We, we're pretty small, but believe it or not, guys, compared to some places in the state, we're one of the big ones.
Well, we're classified large, a large district.
A large district, so.
Well, that gives you an idea of what we're dealing with.
So, you know, yeah, the current House bill, and I haven't seen what's been floating around in the Senate, um, but the current House bill that they're tinkering around with, that talks about supervisory districts, I mean, there's been some careful thought put into that and.
Some of these people uh, that are on the Education Committee this year, Sir, uh, Shap had a, a Educational Study Committee last summer that met early fall, made up of some business people, educators and so forth. Uh, and, and he had some of the uh, the, the representatives uh, on that committee and uh, uh, one of them that has some experience is uh, Bernie Jessowich from Cambridge. He's been on the school board twenty years probably. So he, he's got a good feel of how it affects uh, some of the smaller communities and so forth. And these were some of the, I wasn't very enthused when I s, when we were given the breakout of the committees, when I, I saw the revamp of the Education Committee. Cause I think there are people there that can make something happen this year.
And, and Jay, it sounds like you're very familiar with the, how to access the bills. Have other people had a chance to look at the new website?
Well, I was just looking at, well, I don't look at the website, but I am part of some groups that for uh, preschool and um, the early education models and so they're always reporting out what's going on. And there was an article that I wanted to keep tab on, but I lost it, so I'm not gonna speak without, you know. Well, some of it is a little scary because I do feel like there's a lot of different pieces about where the money's coming from, but you know, the money's gotta come from somewhere, so if, you know, it's that whole, they just keep shuffling, it feels like, instead of really digging in and figuring out what is the best.
Well, I, one of the things I think that Shap's trying to do and David, uh, with David Sharp is that instead of just having the Education Committee be responsible for policy and the programs and so forth, he's trying to make them, the money be tied into this so that everything's coming out of one committee and they know what's going on. And uh, I think this is gonna be a, a big help.
The other, the other challenge, and nobody wants to poke the bear and that's very obvious, but it's been talked about for years. And our major cost drivers in this district and just about every other district in the state of Vermont are salaries and benefits. Um, and at some point, that's gonna have to be dealt with by the state as well. I've also seen snippets of bills that are talking about, you know, schools cannot mandate contracts or impose a contract. Um, there, there's a potential bill floating for that and by the same token, teachers can't strike. Um, but by the same token, along with that, at some point, um, insurance as well is gonna have to be addressed. And I think it's gonna, you guys are gonna have to address that. It's gonna have to come from the state. And it's not gonna be pleasant and you have my sympathy because, you know, tensions are high and emotions are high on both sides.
Tension down there?
But, you know, that's, that's why we elect you, so go with our blessing, but.
Jay's got a really good point though, because in order to, the, one of the biggest factors for a district is the teachers' contracts. And if you're gonna put a price on per pupil statewide, how are we going to get the teachers, you know, afford teachers that other cities could afford and districts could afford? So that's something, it should be a state thing so that income that teachers receive, receive is never an option that the district has to deal with, I feel. If you want every opportunity for a student, it has to be equal across the board.
Well, and one of the reasons that um, we've been considered a lower spending district and the tax rate has stayed where it is is because that eighty percent that we pay uh, within our, is, is, is lower. We are at state average here in Winuski. We're, we're within a thorough, thorough state average, but. But not in Chedney County. But, but not in Chedney County.
Right.
We're at fourteen thousand something, is it, uh, our per pupil here?
When you, when you add in federal budget.
Yeah.
To that number, yeah. So, uh, there are a lot of challenges and, and as you go and, and tinker with the whole funding system, there's always the Brigham decision. You know, and, and that, that may, you know, the Supreme Court was very clear about that and Act sixty and then Act sixty-eight came out of that. So as you start to tinker, then you have to say, okay, are we still following, is this still equitable? So you guys have tremendous challenges ahead of you and I wish you both the best. Um, but again, I'm really, unlike last year, I'm really, really pleased so far with what I'm seeing come out of the legislature. People are stopping and, and everybody knows something's gotta get done, but people are taking the time to really consider it, getting lots of feedback, you know, the V S B A is involved, the Superintendent's Association is involved. You know, people are starting to really put their heads together and I, I have high hopes that something good is gonna come out of this.
I, I think one of the things I see different this year is that, you know, I don't care which bill it is. In the past, somebody would say, well, here's Bill such and such. And somebody say, well, it's being sponsored by a Democrat or a Republican. The uh, name tags, I'm sort of disappointed this year. They're looking at the bill. And they're not, you know, and that's an improvement now. I'm not saying that it's happening every day, but it's happening more than what it has in the past.
I think for me, one of the things that caught my attention as much as anything else was a comment about uh, watching for unfunded mandates that come down through. So even if it drives nothing other than each year a thought that says, we need to put this in, but how are we gonna fund it? We need to put this in, how are we gonna fund it? If it's an adder and then there's nothing coming with it, you know, as long as the thought is put behind it, that, that to me is gonna be a huge step forward. So. Yep, so I think uh, yeah, it'll be an interesting piece. We'll keep an eye, you know, the V S B A's done a pretty good job summarizing from, it's, it's a particular lens they're, they're, you know, presenting it from, but it's at least a view, so.
I have a question. I wonder about the um, collaboration between the House and Senate Committees on Education. Are those?
That look like the dagger.
That's well-coordinated and collaborative, right? Excellent, that's great to hear, anyway.
It, it's, depends on the makeup of the committees. I mean, there's some people go out of their way to talk to the Senate, say, hey. I mean, there's some people go out of their way to talk to the Senate, say, hey, we're working on such and such. There are other committees, they don't mingle till the bill is, uh, passed in the House, and it goes to the Senate, and then it's, it's, uh, revised. There's no talking till the conference committee takes place, which is the last week, last couple days of the session. And everybody's under the gun to, to get out of there, and, uh, so, hopefully, there's, there's more of it going on this year, but I-
Two houses need to learn how to collaborate.
Yeah.
And so in, in that, um, and we have six senators for Chittenden County, um, and so, uh, I don't actually know if any of our senators are on the Education Committee, um.
Uh, David Zekman is, it looks like, right from the Senate?
From the Senate, yeah.
And Philip Ruth, isn't he, Chittenden?
Yeah.
Yep, so just thinking of, of, um, what you all can do, and, and you can contact them, just as you're contacting us to, to have, to, uh, to have the Senate perspective and to also encourage those connections, because as Clem said, neither one of us are on the Education Committee in the House, um, and if we've got two of our six senators that are on the Education Committee in the Senate, then that's a, a really great in in that way, too.
Well, there's one thing I haven't seen this year, unless they snuck in, I haven't seen any of our students down there.
Hmm. They have been there.
They have?
Yeah, and I, so I, I would love for it to know, because I ran into a couple of students for, from the, um, Tobacco, uh, Anti-Tobacco Coalition, um, and, uh, but I didn't know that they were coming, and, uh, I would have loved to have met them on purpose, um, rather than, like, I had my coat on, I was walking out the door, and luckily, like, it all worked, and, you know, Clem missed them, and so if there's other times that students are down there, it would be fabulous to meet them, show them around if they're interested, kind of, you know, s-
That'd be great.
Show them whatever is helpful.
What I try to do, what we've done in the past is, if we know in advance, and then we have a list of the, the names of the students, uh, one of us will get up and introduce them under, uh, Comet Period, uh, um, and, you know, they'll ask, uh, the kids to stand up and they'll get a round of applause, and, uh, and, you know, we can help them get in. If there's, if they wanna take part into a committee discussion, if we know in advance, we can work with the, uh, Chair of the Committees.
So, we don't always find out in, with much advance either?
Mm-hmm.
That the kids are being invited to come?
Yeah.
So what's the best way to let you guys know, email?
Email?
Yeah, for me, it's email, and I check it multiple times a day, so even if it's, uh, hey, there's kids in the building right now.
Winuski's coming to town.
Yeah, that's great, so I don't check it every hour.
It's, it's amazing, and, and we've got a, I don't know how many new members, thirty some odd, I think it is. I, in the past, when we brought kids down there, you know, they used to hear George and I talk about, and Kenny talk about the makeup of our district. Until you bring twenty kids down there and they see the makeup, they thought you were just telling a fib, I mean, you know, pulling their leg. Uh, it, it, so it, it helps, you know, more ways than one to, uh, to be seen down there.
So I just found out about something tonight, that I think they're gonna be, that some of our students will be there Friday. Is there something with C C V going on, talking about?
Yes, there is, yeah.
Okay, so a student that I work with here, um, uh, that is, will graduate, but is also taking C C V courses right now, texted me and said, hey, I'm supposed to be talking at the State House on Friday, can you help me prepare?
Thanks.
Uh, so I don't, I'm not even sure what it's about, but, so some of our students might be there Friday.
Have them get hold of us.
Okay.
Or, and, you know, we can meet them.
Yeah.
Show them around.
Okay.
Make sure if he's there in the morning, so we're on the floor at nine thirty. We haven't been on the floor less, less than forty-five minutes a day so far, we haven't got a lot of bills there. But, uh, we can introduce the individual.
Good timing. All right, anything else? Now, I like the suggestion about the, you know, Senator and bouncing something there.
It's a great website, too, it's so easy now to find everything.
Yeah, and they just, big update.
Really well done.
Good, all right, anything else from you guys, huh? Anything else from the board?
How to get hold of us.
Yeah, thank you for this, it's great to have this conversation.
I'll run the Senate one, and I'll, I'll give it to Mike.
All right, yeah, just send it, and just send it, and I'll pass it. All right, thank you very much. Okay. So that was nine D down, we are through the consent agenda, I would accept a motion to accept the consent agenda. Second, any other discussion on the consent agenda? There was one small correction, but I will make that, Sean, in the ends, uh, evidence that I had sent you an email on.
The emissions?
Yeah.
I think that's in the other report.
That's in the, oh, that's in the other report.
That's in the one that's up for discussion, asset protection.
That was in the consent.
There's no emissions.
First and second.
First.
This.
Jen.
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 Tori. All right, oh. All those in favor? Consent, a consent, aye, opposed, okay. On to six, ends monitoring, uh, brief discussion here, we've got ten minutes, um, we've had our education, uh, college ready, we've had our career ready discussions, uh, time to start thinking about, um, who we can work with and lean on to have a discussion in one of our meetings about the local and global engagement. So, I got a great list from you guys last time on the career ready. We went out and got folks to come in, looking maybe six to eight people would work. But I think, in order to build that list, what does it really mean? To be, uh, engaged both locally and globally? What does that really mean? And who would you, we get to have that discussion? I think that's gonna shape a lot of the, um, interpretation of what that is.
Thoughts?
I got some great people in mind.
Uh, and, and, so, bef- before a name, function, what would be, what would be the, uh, their, their lot in life? Why would their, what do they do that would bring their name to your forefront?
Yeah, 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 so the person I'm thinking of is, uh, is someone who was born, uh, in another country, who spent a long time living in this country, and who is very active locally, uh, in promoting diversity and inclusion, and in thinking through sort of lifelong pipelines, uh, to get folks into college. And, you know, she's, so she has a very kind of sophisticated sense of what it means to be connected to, uh, the world outside of the United States, um, and also a very deep and, uh, interesting understanding of how, um, how things happen and change happens locally, and, and, you know, how people sort of, uh, are able to get access or not to the things that we all want our children to have access to.
Yeah, so it's a local and or global engagement from a cultural and a diversity perspective?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good way to summarize it.
Are we talking about people that live in Winuski or not?
Doesn't have to be, no. Well, well, at the end of the day, what we really need to understand is, when Sean writes up a view of what does it mean to be engaged locally and globally, when we have a student leave the school,
Yeah.
and we say they are engaged locally and globally, what does that mean?
Yeah.
How do you see it? From him, from, from Sean's perspective, it's how do we put that into the student?
Yep.
On the way out, you know, not on the way out the door, but as they come funneling through. But what does that look like? When I look at that student, when, when we look at that student, when that student engages with the community, what, what does that look like?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Does that mean that we have to have a participant list for Sean to meet that ends?
Yeah, cause I, I look at global and community, like, I'm just thinking of kids here, students already, that have a huge global connection with their Facebook, Twitter, all that stuff. It's global, I mean, they have friends in England and Ireland and everywhere, so, I mean, just the technology piece is, gets you, yeah, is, is global, um, you know, we could always-
That, that's kind of interesting, because that, that's two views that are culturally, I in my head had environmentally.
Uh-huh.
Engaged.
Love it.
What does it mean locally, and what does it mean globally, from an environmental standpoint?
Activism.
Activism, recycling, uh, composting, um, that's local stuff that you can do, you know? So, you know, there's very much different-
What about, like, on a, um, you could, if, if you're gonna travel past all of those things, you would, I would have to say, what, you know, what about, like, on a capitalist side of that trade, um, you know?
Job growth?
Job growth, negotiations, entrepreneurs, you know, that whole-
Yeah.
The whole, you know, not to tie it to a dollar, but, but-
Yeah, but-
global skills in, in a job type of situation are becoming extremely important.
Yeah, yeah.
And to tack on to those two thinkings, too, is, one, you know, I always think about volunteerism, you know, volunteering, like, community support, but then that sort of environmental piece and also jobs is sort of the, the global problems that we're all meaning to solve, let's take climate change, where we have a local organiz- or, an organization that was created out of Vermont, three fifty dot org, that's making some headway into what are some of the major problems coming? How's it affecting us locally, but how's it affecting us globally? With that three fifty piece, it's also around, there's some work being done in the Middle East around marine protected areas, because at three fifty, um, in terms of the amount of carbon that's in the air, it's affecting how coral reefs are dying. So how does sort of some, you know, larger problems that we, that are kind of being addressed locally in one avenue are being addressed, you know, lo- globally in other avenues, how do we make those connections between those?
And they are, I just read a piece about how, um, the, like, Russia and the United States, I'm not sure if they had a meeting, whatever they call those meetings, in, in social studies, but, um-
Friendships, friendship circles?
They're gonna sanction if they don't, they're supposed to rein in control over their, um, output of
Emissions.
Admissions and stuff like that, so I read this whole piece on it, and how, you know, it would be the U N, I'm guessing, would put sanctions on certain countries for not following, they're supposed to cut back the emissions, and so those are all pieces of the global environment, the, the larger piece of it.
So, I'm gonna go back to my first question is-
What is it?
How, yeah, how does this generate a participant list?
Yeah.
Do we need a person?
And we may not need to participate, I mean, we could, but I don't think it'd be-
We've done it, we, we've done it with a career, we've done it with a college.
Yeah, but doesn't global go with career and college readiness?
I, I think Sean showed as much in his ends write-up as far as having some of that local and global piece.
Absolutely.
Embedded into the other two.
Cause you have to meet this requirement, ultimately.
And you do.
This is your, this is your means, do you need a participant list, or would that be cumbersome for you?
No, I mean, I think it would be interesting to have some folks come and talk about what they think this means. I mean, you, you can, I mean, this can be gigantic and infinite.
Yeah, it could be.
You know, I mean, I, I keep going back to reading the whole s- uh, statement. W S D students will lead healthy, productive, and successful lives, and engage with their local and global community.
So I would say someone from dealer dot com would be great, cause they just expanded globally, and some bigger businesses like that for peace, and then you could go, um-
Get Phil McKibben in here for-
Right.
Find somebody that does, like, uh, the trade part from overseas materi- uh, you know, goods, ad moiv.
And then somebody who's like a strong, local volunteer type of person, and how exactly serves the net.
Yeah. Y'all have any thoughts? Like, as y'all think about it, also, you know, in terms of local and global, um, engagement within the community, and, and, not to put you on the spot, but as it's happening, like, thinking about how, from your perspective, too, of what does that seem like for you?
Well, for, for more local, I think Partnership for Change is something, uh, some students could take , uh, opportunity of working with, uh, just by being in high school, and, um, trying to see what they could do to improve their schools throughout the community.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cause I've been working with a lot of groups lately like that, and I'm not sure if that would count as local. Um, there's also, um, more towards like northeastern, kind of a little more global than local, but, um, uh, northeastern, uh, like, Leadership Institute, where a bunch of students from all around England come together to, um, work with each other, teach each other, and also learn from each other about our school systems, and also how that impacts us.
Spiral International, the group, cause host families, bringing, hosting families. She did, she made me think of that, and she's saying-
We posted that on the forum, that's-
I was a leadership perspective, but, yeah, we was talking about this pretty good stuff.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I don't know if this is an ad for now, but we kind of talked about the three pillars of sustainability here, you know, between the economics, the environment, and the social side of things. Uh, that's kind of what we described, I don't know if that's what we meant in our end statement, I'm trying to think back on it.
See, I had no part of that, uh, part of the end statement, so I'm gonna defer to whoever came up with that at the retreat.
You lame duck.
Right, this is your lame duck session right here, isn't it?
I love it.
But I think it was also, I was sorry, um, you know, about engaging locally and globally is also about following your interests, you know, and, and what sort of drives you and motivates you, and seeing larger connections around that. And so then how do you dig in and start making a difference? You know, where, you know, certainly speaking to that idea of leadership and, and even just improving your own school, that is local engagement.
And the opportunities students are given to be able to do that.
Right.
That's, I think, that, that's a good point.
Yeah, yeah. And you were about to say something else, so.
Nope.
Don't get joyed, because you're sort of getting, what was our intent?
The why.
Yeah, the why, right.
The why, why, why do we wanna make our social, our culture, our communities better?
Right, right, well, and it sounds like you're saying it's sort of, like, endowed them with the capacity for change, or something, that's what it was on?
Mm-hmm.
And that ties into that, that word successful, which has a very broad interpretation.
Problem solving, critical thinking, around your own communities and global communities, how the connections, you know, are made.
Hmm.
Um, social, and, and I like how you put it into the three pillar piece, because, you know, it's the same way of solving problems around, like, climate change at three fifty, or marine protected areas, you know, there's also, like, so how do we create jobs around that, so that there's some sustainability for communities to make a difference, and where, how, how does that all tie in?
Bring my recycling bin, uh, thing up right now, then. Would you like me to, like, would this be an appropriate place?
Probably, yeah, probably not, uh, not exactly the right time.
We weren't talking sustainability.
But, so, so I think circling back around, I think it, this discussion alone, I think, helps me understand that defining the ends very broadly is gonna allow the, the leadership team the flexibility to define something that is different, is not, um, scripted. Which, that freedom and an artistic license, I think, is gonna go a long way to helping define something potentially different, unique, creative.
Yeah.
Um, like an iLab thing we had a couple of years ago that came through, and somebody said, I don't know what this is, yet, but trust me, it's good. So, you put it in a budget, and you go, and you get something really good, but that's where you get that.
Yeah, victorious, yeah. In your will.
All right, um-
It's a victory.
Let me, let me take what I think I heard here, um, you know, everything that we just had from volunteerism to business programs worldwide, to cultural things through Spiral International, and see if, I can't maybe work with Sean, it probably won't be for, um, March, uh, but let's see if we can try to get something defined. Again, when, when Sean comes forward with a local and global engagement interpretation, we gotta have some kind of an idea of what, what we intended when that came through, and does this even come close?
Mm-hmm.
So.
For some reason, it just, as we just had a legislature, legislature representative here, uh, governing, you know, local government and volunteer, and how that has an, you know, policy in some ways, I mean, that's another level of it.
No, totally, understanding the, the power structure, the way decisions are made.
Yeah, cause Liz Smith is like, whoa, that's right.
Yeah, wanna have the money flow, I mean, you need some sophisticated stuff.
Okay.
All right.
A lot of ground for this, kinda fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this one here would be a little bit open-ended for a bit, but we'll, we'll narrow it down to something, a great discussion, appreciate it. Uh, anything else on that subject there? Okay, so next, we have, uh, executive limitations and policy discussion here on asset protection, policy two point six. Um, I would, uh, take any discussion that we have on, again, this is a monitoring report. Take, uh, thoughts, comments?
Is there anything that was supposed to be brought to the board meeting?
Yeah, so let me, let me walk you through a couple of things here. Cause as always, when I've gone through and put this together, it's in draft form and then I look at it again before our meeting and, uh, find things. So it's good we have a two month cycle. Um, on page one, so the interpretation was split into two and was, was, uh, a little butchered there. So the second paragraph of the interpretation, um, should read, kind of also, I interpret this to mean that in order to replace damaged loss assets, the superintendent should ensure the assets are insured and is lost, uh, and the coverage should be comparable to other similar entities. So that just needs to be cleaned up a little bit there.
But it's all one paragraph.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then down in the evidence section was what Mike was referencing to earlier, the four, third bullet should be errors and omissions, not emissions.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, we're trying to get down on emissions, right?
We're trying to get at that environmental piece and asset protection. Mike called me.
Do our parts in global engagement.
Yeah, that's good, I didn't see that.
And then the, the letter from Rebecca, uh, I thought that I would have tonight, I don't have it. So that's, that letter of support will basically.
Oh, great, okay.
The letter of support that I've given in, in at least one other monitoring report is, is basically a testimonial from her that all of these things are accurate, uh, and a, and a check and balance on what's in here. And so that'll be in the final, um, copy for your review. And then the, the only other change that I really have is in number nine, which is the last page. And again, that was, um, in the interpretation and that those would be brought together, the second paragraph. Also, I interpret this to mean the superintendent shall not cause or allow any practice and so on. And where those come together, like I've said before, what I've done is I've really used, uh, Orange Southwest and Essex Town. Mark Andrews and Brent Kay who have gone through this and, so I look at their reports and really use them as models and then bring them together and blend them for our purposes here. And so, uh, while they're, they're very congruent in most cases, sometimes there's redundancies in the way that, in the language. And so what I, my process is I kind of bring them all together and then I start trying to make it more concise. So what you're seeing in those two paragraphs is like I've brought it all together in one place and then I start paring it down. Sometimes it's, uh, it's not perfect yet.
But it's clear.
It's getting there.
You know, it really is clear, yeah.
Well, yeah, is it clear from your perspective?
Yeah.
Definitely, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, the, the, the format and the interpretations thus far have been hit to the point, so.
Right.
And then the last thing that I, the close any buildings as public schools was kind of interesting. Um, because the way the, the, the even simpler interpretation was to, to me was like, you can't just like shut the building down for no reason.
Cause you said.
Or you can't get rid of the building, like, say it's no longer a school building.
Mm-hmm.
But, but there's so many, so many steps that would have to happen before that.
I, I have a question and, and my question, Sean, is should, and this, this may be a policy thing, less than an interpretation, but my understanding by statute is only the board can close a school. I mean, if we were to say, okay, we're not gonna have an elementary school.
It's gonna shut it down.
We're gonna shut it down, we're gonna tuition our students to somewhere else, or, or we're gonna close the entire district down and we're gonna tuition. You by statute can't do that anyway.
Right.
So why is it in here? And again, that's not you, that's not your interpretation, that is a, that is a thing that, because it's covered by statute, the board in the future, if you review this policy, may wanna say, section ten.
Yeah. And that's a good point, I can add the statute actually into the interpretation.
Right, right.
I believe it's under powers of school boards.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause I wonder, you know, in, in terms of it being part of that is, is if their districts or supervisory units that have small, outlying little buildings that are running groups, you know, it's just, the statute covers it, so it's something to.
Okay, so that sounds like it would be a policy discussion, striking that section.
To strike it off or just leave it there, cause it's in statute, statute.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause it's already covered.
Yeah.
Somewhere else, yeah. Okay. But I think the, you know, what you've got here at least covers it for being in there now, for covering it.
Right.
And we'll bring it back, we'll bring it back with our normal ones at some point. All right. Um, so any other discussion on the monitoring report for asset protection? Sounds like we're covered for the things that we needed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've been very fortunate in being able to keep the facilities up to date, so that helps a great deal too.
And then Rebecca's done a really good job with the insurance with Bizbit too. And I think, uh, I'm not sure how long we've been members of Bizbit, but it hasn't been forever. And, uh, that was a good move, I think, uh, on our part to get involved with that.
Yeah.
It's good, good insurance, good coverage, yeah.
All right. Good. Um.
Yes, so there's two things that, do we need to see those documents? There was the one under number five.
From Rebecca?
Yeah.
Right, and that's what you're saying, we didn't have those yet, we'll have them in the.
Just be that one statement, okay.
It'll be a single page that will have all of those elements that are referenced.
Single page. Okay. Perfect.
Okay. And then discussion on policies three, three, and I hope you got my email on three, four, three, four, three dot four dot six was, uh, a little too deep. Um, but what I'd like to do with the, this, these two here is to make sure that we can agree that we are at least, um, in a good position to go forward with those as they are and they don't need to be manipulated at all. Well, did those get?
Did I get those?
I don't know that those actually came in the package, cause I didn't see, uh.
No, but you can get them right off the website.
Yeah, they are on the website.
Okay. Uh, three, three is a delegation to the superintendent. Um, in reading down through this, I think it was pretty well defined as to when we originally defined it. And the order of things that will be, will be done, uh, this is, board will instruct a superintendent through written policies that prescribe your organizational ends to be achieved and describe your organizational situations and actions to be avoided. Allowing a superintendent to use any, uh, reasonable interpretation of these policies. So that essentially defines policy governance in and of itself. We've gone through the once over, the first pass through all of the policies to put them in place. So I think that covers, uh, covers that at a high level and I don't think we would do anything different with that. Um, the second piece was, um, each, each different component. Um, I did have one.
You have some typos in those.
Yep, and we can, uh, we can fix those as we go. Um, it goes through the means. Um, I had one item, I don't know if it was in here.
We're just discussing this, right?
Yeah, just discussing it to see if we wanna bring it back, if it, if it makes it, if it makes sense to bring it back or if it, we think it's as, as good as it is and needs to be for now. Um.
I think it's good.
I had, uh.
Guess I spent all day reviewing.
Yeah, I had one question. And it wasn't with three, three, so I thought three, three was, was, um, decent.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty, uh, pretty innocuous.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Um.
Do you want you to do until we say more or less limitations, go do it?
Right.
Three years.
Oh, I know what I wanted to, I know what I wanted to, to discuss, and that was in fact three, four, six. And I wanted to have just a brief discussion about our thoughts on, uh, three, four, six says, a formal evaluation of the superintendent by the board will occur annually, but culminating the regular monitoring data provided during the year and the board's recorded acceptance or non-acceptance of the reports and identifying performance trends evidenced by that data. Um, we are responsible for doing an, an annual evaluation. Um, do we still believe that monitoring the ends, monitoring reports like we are and accepting them is, as we roll through, as we're gonna, you know, sequentially move through, uh, the rolls each, I think over two years we'll do all of the policies that, that govern, uh, the superintendent's behavior. Is that enough? Do we believe that that's enough to call it an evaluation? I'm keeping track every time we, uh, accept one to make sure that we do them all.
So, uh, using the progress monitoring reports as the evaluation?
Right.
Would there be other?
Well, so the other piece, we just sent out a, a survey. Uh, in the beginning, we had, the last I looked, it was forty-seven responses and I think there's more than that now. So we do have the output there, I will summarize it and send it out so you guys can see what, what the summary was.
So that's another piece, so progress monitoring reports.
I haven't figured out exactly how to format the comments yet. That's the, that's been the one piece that's kind of eluded me, uh, on a, on a format that kind of makes sense. So, I'll, I'll try to work with that, but I will send, so you got sixty-five, sixty-five responses now. And I will put, uh, I will put out the summary that I, that I had put together so you guys can see what that looks like. But I think that's a, an important piece is a, an evaluation of the superintendent's visibility from the staff perspective.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, so I'll, I'll get that detail out too. Is that enough?
So, so there's this last phrase here, it says identifying performance trends evidenced by that data.
Right.
So that data is the data that's contained in the reports?
Right, correct. Um, so for instance, uh, in the ends reports, uh, that we just accepted tonight for the college ready and a career ready, one, one data point you can't make a straight line with yet, right? So, as we start getting some actual data in here, are we, we can prescribe, uh, some improvements? Or, in specific areas, I guess, if we needed to, are we seeing it? So that's, that's where that data comes in, but it has to be after at least a second iteration.
Yeah.
To understand what you're getting.
Well, as you said, what, what, what's the sort of range of data you think would be relevant in those reports that we would be looking at? When we're talking like graduation rates, test scores, uh.
In the ends?
Yeah, that's not.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think, you know, I put in that and then we decided that all that was gonna be submitted for approval would be the interpretation this time. But there was a whole bunch of examples of, of evidence.
Right.
Much of what you just said.
And so again, the first, I heard you just one, one quick piece, again, it, you know, is a sixty-five percent graduation rate, good or bad? It's a data point, right?
Right.
And the next one is starting to fill in and then where do you go from there, Sergeant?
Yeah, and then that's kind of what I wanted to touch on. Number one, the first few years of, of, first of all, the superintendent being here. Um, and, and after tonight, my opinion doesn't matter, so take it for what it's worth.
But, we will take all emails and interjections.
But, but the first couple of years of a superintendent being in a district, you have to kind of cut up some slack to, to allow them to, to grab hold of the reins. The other part of this is we're just getting into policy governance, so again, as we know, we're just established, starting to establish data points, figuring out what the ends are. The third thing, and this is the most critical, I think, from here on forward, is I feel it's obviously a model of continuous improvement that we start here.
Wherever that is.
Wherever that is, you know, and, and whether people think, oh, well, that's great, or no, that's not so great, whatever. Is that as you start to get a string of data points along, are we improving? Or what a lot of policy governance boards are actually seeing, um, and I've had discussions with them over the last couple of years, is their data will do this.
Yeah.
And so they don't really know, are, are we just, you know, rocking with the waves, you know, on the ocean? Or is there something specifically in place where we're gonna try to continuously improve?
Or does the data need to be?
Or does the data, is there something, right, is there something wrong with the data, you're using, you know, a wrong measurement?
Modified.
Or whatever the case may be. But those three things, I think, and the first two, the board has pretty much done, cause Sean has been here several years. We've, I think, started to get a firm grip on the ends now of what exactly it is. I'm thinking in the next year or two, the board should start getting monitoring reports, especially on the ends. You know, executive limitations are easy, cause that's the other thing that we've judged him by. That's kind of binary, he's either stepped outside of that box that he's not supposed to, or he hasn't. So it's a yes or no question. The ends, starting in like, say, the next one to two years, I would feel the board should be able to say, okay, we've now decided what our data points are, let's start looking, what's happening year to year to year? Are we improving, are we not improving, and if not, why?
I think that data is starting to be gathered, now how do you collate it?
I agree.
Formulate it and sum it up, so.
I, with, with the Agency of Education's, uh, Continuous Improvement Plan, that's something, that's a means thing, isn't it? Would that be part of the end statement, that template plan that they're, and I don't know if that's.
That's an interesting question.
Yeah, I think.
I don't know how that, that, I know that, that it's there and it is about school effectiveness, you know, so I didn't know if that's a piece of the
Any kind of improvement plan.
puzzle for us is through the ends, is here's a template that the state has said, here's how we're gonna start measuring school effectiveness.
I, I'll let you.
I, I think, I think it probably, that plan will contain both.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think hopefully that will become like the one plan, right?
Not all these other plans.
So schools won't have twenty-seven plans that they're dealing with.
Right.
And we've been kind of holding off on that, like, having that, the, the big action plan in place until we get that, the template and everything when we're moving forward to.
Right, okay.
Then we'll bring the Green Mountain Star and the, the local action plans and everything else together and create that single plan.
Mm-hmm, cause that's where it happens, right. Cause it seems like the effort is to, to consolidate all those plans.
Focus on a single outcome.
Yes, focus, right.
And the good thing is we have the end statement, so it'll be reflected in there, but I think a lot of those plans are gonna be means. It's how are you getting there, you know, what are, what's the administration do, what are teachers doing, other staff, what are their students, parents?
Okay.
I mean, the other thing that I, that I would, uh, add is, you know, um, the board has those three methods in number two that talk about internal, external, and direct inspection.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so those are things that you can consider. Um, you know, the survey is, uh, wouldn't necessarily be considered, I don't think, a third party.
No.
Uh, piece, but it is, it is a survey and you get data back from that that you can, um, make judgments on. Um, but that could be, you know, development of some sort of a cycle where maybe the board decides to employ a third party to look at compliance with executive limitations from a, um, an outside perspective every three years or something like that.
Financial controls, maybe, I mean, if you have in mind.
Right.
We do that every year with the auditor, but are the, are the practices internally actually getting it?
Right.
And the truth is, there are educational audits that can happen as well. And you guys shouldn't be afraid of that. Be careful that you don't hang your superintendent, have to dry over it, because the truth is, he can probably learn. It would probably be more beneficial for Sean in certain aspects, you know, for an external audit once in a while to happen, to see, you know, cause, cause an external auditor, if you get a good one, you know, as far as an education audit, will not only say this, this, and this is structurally wrong, but they will say, this is how you fix it. So if you run into things, you know, you shouldn't be afraid and, and I encourage you to be collaborative with superintendent with it. But I wouldn't be afraid of that, because there are some good companies and organizations that do some good educational audits as well.
And then the third one is the direct inspection, which I think you've done, uh, one of.
Yeah, and one because there was something in that report that you could actually go out and grab.
Right, yeah.
So that one, that one worked. I, and personally, I think the survey that we just sent out is a form of a direct inspection too. It's a different component, it's not a financial inspection, it's not a, uh, but it is a, an inspection of, to me, climate. Pure and simple, it's a reflection of climate, so. Okay. Good, so we'll, we'll, uh, those two as-is seem to, to be working okay. Um, anything else on, uh, on those two? Okay, student report to the board, welcome, your turn.
Mm-hmm, okay, so I'm going first this time, uh.
Okay, so I'm going first this time. For our February month, we just finished the Penguin Plunge on Saturday. Saturday, yeah. Winuski raised fourteen thousand dollars.
Wow!
And we had twenty-five plungers, and the majority being middle school, unfortunately.
Twenty-five students.
Twenty-five students.
And now there's twenty-five adults.
Oh, twenty-five students, okay. On Twitter-
Twenty-five students, that's great. Did you have to like hack the ice away? There must have been like two feet ice.
Yeah, they had to. I heard that they had to clear the ice.
You were there hacking the ice away, right?
Oh, yes.
I've already told Rainbow and Nadia that.
Next.
Almost all of those students were middle school students, so they're gonna, they're gonna get the high schoolers motivated.
See where the future of the school lies.
Any board members go in?
I don't know. We'll go in if you guys go in.
I know exactly what to say.
You go first. A board jump, a board jump.
Board jump.
So the pictures are all on the school's Twitter, if you want to check out some awesome pictures. You can see a great picture of Mr. McManon with some crazy green Afro hair. And he's like, the face is excellent. He has a great expression. Also, we've been having a lot of community meetings, and if you don't know, the community meetings are where each month are two meetings where the entire high school comes together in auditorium for announcements, events, or to share something. Middle school, high school band performed on the February sixth community meeting, and we got a lot of great reviews. We played Crazy Train and Thriller, and we got some really, yes, really-
The band played Thriller?
Yes.
Awesome.
And it was very fun. We also got some piano performances and guitar performances by some other music students in previous community meetings. Also, we have had a new system in the middle and high school called the GX Champion of the Day. This is where a middle school or high school student is recognized for demonstrating one of the graduation expectations. And every day, teachers can nominate a single student who they believe has demonstrated one of these graduation expectations. And basically, there's a, they write up a paragraph about what they've done, and they just get to see who wins or does not win the GX Champ of the Day. Basically, there's a panel that also judges who gets to become the GX Champ of the Day, and when they are announced, the winner of the day gets to wear an awesome kind of a wrestling, fake wrestling belt with the words Winuski GX Champ on it.
Yeah, see it on Twitter, it's awesome.
Our one and only, our one and only, Ladonya Taylor has also won GX Champ.
How did you wear the belt, though? Over your shoulder or around your waist?
I wore it. It fit me.
On your waist, no?
Yeah.
Sweet.
And she was nominated by Mr. McManon for her work on the school board.
Yeah!
And also, there have been fundraisers. The yearbook committee has been fundraising with Valentine grams. They are selling things like chocolate roses, Valentine-themed stuffed gorillas that have Velcro latches, carnations, and just little messages as well. This is for their yearbook and to continue working on making it an excellent book for everybody to have. Also, prom committee has been fundraising more and more. They've been selling trail mix and selling raffle tickets for the upcoming student faculty basketball game, which will be fun, hopefully.
Of course.
They will also-
We won last year, just to remind you.
And there will also be a fundraiser at Papa Frank's on March twenty-fifth, so if you'd like to support our prom committee, you can go to Papa Frank's on that day.
And eat, sweet.
Lots of food-related things.
What day is it?
March twenty-fifth. Also, with the Boston trip, that fundraising is still continuing. Our final fundraiser before our trip is a giant raffle that consists of tickets and lots of prizes from the local restaurants and companies, and there are gift certificates. If you'd like to buy a raffle ticket, I encourage you to see a business students. Me especially. And there's also, the Peace Jam is fundraising through GoFundMe to raise money for their trip to the Peace Jam Conference in Connecticut. This consists of their funds for a hotel, a food, the admissions for the conference, and stuff just fees to get there. And also, elementary school is continuing their search for a principal. And the candidates, there are four candidates, are all given tours by some students. And so today, Ladonya and I gave a tour to one of the candidates, and there will be more tours given by other students as well.
Recently, there have been three students who have been really going everywhere to serve the community. And a little is the secretary of the Community Service Commission, so she records the minutes. And also helps to give the student perspective in their meetings. Jared Foughton and Jared Chagman have been working on the Public Works Committee, where they help to give the perspective of student and losing citizen as they help to fix problems in Winuski.
Local engagement.
Local engagement. Check.
Aspirations Day is coming up, and that is an entire day dedicated to students learning about future potential career pathways. At the Solon University students won the design for the T-shirt contest, and so on that day, everyone gets T-shirts about Aspirations Day. And our runners-up was Rainbow and Jason Chong, so she won last year, so it's fair. Additions will be held March ninth, tenth, and the fourteenth for Winuski's first annual talent show, celebrating Winuski's talent.
Yes.
Yes. Morgan file will be posted, is posted on the school's website. Children, adults, and groups are welcome, so it will be those. March nineteenth is the middle and high school band orchestra and chorus concert. And onto sports with varsity, there's a varsity and JV girls' basketball game at Peoples Academy on the twelfth, tomorrow. JV plays at five-thirty, and varsity plays at seven. The girls' record so far is nine to eight. Is that including the last? I think so. Varsity and JV's boy, there are varsity and JV boys' basketball games at Lake Region on the thirteenth, two days. JV plays at five-thirty and varsity at seven. The boys' record so far is thirteen to three.
Thirteen to three?
Yes.
Wow.
Very good, yeah.
Yeah, too shabby.
The boy, the middle school boys' basketball have a basketball game at Georgia on the twelfth. A-team plays at three-thirty, and B-team at four-thirty. This is their last game. And the middle school girls have a basketball game at Georgia on the twelfth as well. B-team at four and A-team at five. This is also their last game.
How they do?
Um, it didn't show on the school, okay, but I think the boys are doing fine.
The last girls' home game is Saturday.
Wait, this comes on-
And it's also senior night for the girls' basketball, for varsity, JV and varsity.
Against Fairfax.
And against Fairfax, and it's also breast cancer awareness night, day, day, it's during the day. And then the last home boys' game is Friday night, the twentieth, and that's senior night for the boys and the cheerleaders. Sorry, I just put that out there. I have players, that's all.
It's not easy to discern on the events calendar on the website, that it's a home game or not a home game.
Oh, right.
It just says who's-
Click on it and see the venue with the broader, yeah.
Yeah.
But everyone should stay tuned for playoff games, too, because if the girls do well, they should have the first playoff game home, so. And the boys should definitely have their first game at home. They've been doing awesome. Both teams have, have been every home game, yeah.
Yay! Community engagement, local.
Always a welcome sight.
Always have to remind me of that.
Hopefully, the weather, the temperatures have two digits in them for you, rather than at or below, or near zero. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, that's done, wow.
We have to circle back. We had an add to the agenda for a teacher nomination, and so we gotta circle back to that guy and get it done. This is a quickly evolving piece.
Oh, is this new?
Yeah.
So this is, um- Do you want to, does somebody need a motion first?
Yeah, we can, I would accept a motion to accept the teacher nomination as defined here. Then we can have a discussion.
So moved?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, a second, okay. Uh, discussion?
Right, so what you have in front of us is noted in the consent agenda, and there was a resignation from Pat Keough, who will be leaving us effective February twenty-eighth, unfortunately, and we thank her for her wonderful service to the district. And so we had to move quite quickly, and we were able to procure Michelle Maholsky, who has recently moved here from California and has extensive experience working with diverse populations in California over about twelve to, twelve, thirteen years of elementary experience, reading specialist background. So we feel really fortunate to have found somebody who can fill in these last few months of the year and really hit the ground running.
She's, Pat is a, one of the second graders?
Second grade.
And, because a lot of the reading clauses, what are the bench readers?
Well, they, yeah, they switch that off depending on, yeah.
And so this is just a long-term position, and then you'll put out a?
We will be putting out a posting to go through the whole hiring process to hire a full-time replacement for next year.
So this is to finish the year?
This is just to finish the year, a long-term sub.
It's an intern role. And the assignment is enough to say, I thought I was, I got you. And twenty-seven, three-twenty-nine is what you're in there this year?
Correct.
Okay, so all those in favor of accepting the teacher nomination as described here? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Onto nine B here, budget cycle reflection. We did this last year, and I think, Jen, your comments about the process moving back and forth either too often or, you know, too much bartering and bargaining. I think we tried to hit that one this year, so reflections on this year's cycle?
It was very efficient.
I didn't, I thought it was fantastic. Nathan's smooth, easy?
I only had one complaint, and that's-
Constructive criticism.
It was, it's constructive, but the budget, I feel that this board has done better than any of the previous boards that I've served with in the past, of allowing the administration to develop the budget within guidelines and not getting into the weeds as far as this, that, and the other thing. The only thing that we did get into, I felt, this year was the added ELL position, and that really was driven by the board. And I guess I don't have a problem with that, but when the board says, well, you can do all of this stuff, but, well. I felt, I felt that we got in-
Yeah, you made that comment.
Yeah, I felt we got into a means with that.
Right.
And, you know, we were told when we were trained and as we've received training in policy governance, that, you know, one of the biggest pitfalls for boards in policy governance is to be careful that we don't start to step into the superintendent's sandbox. And I felt we gave them great guidelines of saying, you know, this is the boundaries that we want. We don't want you over this amount of a percentage of an increase, if possible. You know, we were very nice about how we did it, but I do feel that we did get into the means a little bit.
Yeah, we did have that discussion, you know, we-
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. That's my only comment for that. Other than that, I thought it was fantastic.
Well, and I think, on that, I think it brought up a healthy tension, which is the idea of when you give a frame of a percentage like that.
You can have a wish list.
You know, right, right. And so then, you know, that, I think that's good learning for us moving forward, is it's good to have that number and to have a tight frame. But do you maybe also want to know what the priorities are outside of that?
Because I think it stemmed from past experience with the whole being low in ELL teachers and seeing the presentation and seeing that do they have enough teachers, and is that something that's needed? That maybe because they're in it, they don't see it. And you're right, it is a means, but how else would somebody know
Right.
until you're in trouble?
I think the only other, the only other comment I would have then about the whole cycle itself is, and Sean and I have talked about this, is potentially putting together essentially two budgets. One is if we were to level fund, and then with guidelines. And what would that be? What would that mean? It's more work on the leadership team to try to figure out what would you do if you had to level fund, which-
And go from there.
And then, that, well, that's kind of one case. The other one is guidance of up to X percent, like we did this year, to give guidance, and then there's that, we as a board can see if we go from here, which we gave guidance to, down to a level funded, what kinds of things would be in there or out.
I just, one other thing that you're kind of bringing to my remembrance, somewhere in one of these policies, forgive me, I don't remember which one it is, but it talks about when presenting the budget, there should be something about a multi-year budget. I guess there might have been a little bit about that this year, but I didn't see something where, you know, I guess, I feel with a multi-year budget, the board should be able to say, especially with a negotiated contract, because that's the big, the big swing thing. When you're negotiating and you don't really know how it's gonna play out, that's tough. But once, once you have a settled agreement, you should be able to scale out a few years, barring some type of drastic number change or population change, there should be more of an administration being able to formulate some type of multi-year budget, and I think that's what the policy talks about.
I think, I think actually it was very demonstrated just in how the one-to-one computing is being brought back into the budget slowly and foreseeing that it's going to be, so instead of having to put hundreds of thousands of dollars into it, they're slowly implementing it in and seeing out, so I do see that, to me, that's being implemented. But with negotiations on the horizon, there's no way we can do it right now.
But I'm saying for a total, yeah, and there were parts of it, Jen, I agree, but for the total budget of saying, you know, over the next two to three years, we're looking that-
You're right, except that you have to also consider, after the teacher's negotiation, the next year, you're doing the support staff, so that's two years right there. And then that third year, you can pick up, you know, and, yeah.
And also, we're recommending short, short negotiation cycles, too.
So I think, you know, you're right.
I don't know, I'm throwing it out there, guys, it means nothing, but-
But I think, I think they're already demonstrating some, like, maybe not formally doing it, but I think it's being done informally, looking-
And I think the other component to that is demographics.
Right.
And having really good data, demographic data.
Yeah, and what kind of data? The data, it's tough with the data changing from the state, but as far as educational spending, maybe a good bill will come out of the State House this year, we can cross our fingers, and if it does, you know, maybe things might stabilize a little bit. Who knows?
All right, good.
With a streamlined budget process, I'm wondering if it would make sense to back some of, most of the meetings out of the December month? Because I'm wondering if, if that's a hindrance in terms of everyone being so busy, you know, it's such a crazy month. Not to not get started on it, but I'm also wondering about getting more community members involved in the process?
Moving it which way?
More towards January.
Toward January.
And kind of getting it out of that intense December insanity.
Yeah, but I think there's a reason it has-
Or push it forward.
What you run up against is warnings, so you have to have a budget adopted, and then you have to have the warnings adopted, and then there's a period of time in between that and the
when the
That's why it's done.
The annual report has to be published, and, yeah.
Because then pushing it more towards the November.
You get Thanksgiving and then November.
But then the numbers aren't quite out yet.
Yeah, and you're still waiting for a lot of those numbers to be more firm. Yep, it's a, it's a tough
It is, it's a tough one.
The, from, I know from Rebecca's perspective, too, what was nice was the audit, the timing of the audit this year. So she wasn't doing all of those things at once, because the audit was kind of put to bed, and-
Okay.
Good. Okay. So nine C then is our normal first readings of two different policies here. One of them, professional development. The note in the piece is that this is no longer a required policy.
Right.
So that we have it just as a discussion item. I think the discussion may end up being, do we want to even- So that we have it just as a discussion item. I think uh, the discussion may end up being, do we wanna even move it forward or?
So, I was read, I read that because at first I was a little, because of negotiations and it being a big part of contracts, I had to go back and read the policy and make sure. It's under a means, it's really no use to be a policy and if it's not mandated, it shouldn't be in there.
I agree.
And that was my recommendation, was that it just solely be in procedures.
Yeah, that's all it is, so.
So, how do we go about drop, we gotta take next time to take action to drop it?
Your first reading and then you, next month you eliminate the policy. Not an action item.
Alright, that works. Um, policy five one one eight, participation of home study students in school programs. Uh, we have two. Um, models here, one is uh, our current and the other is the state. Uh, in reading down through, I think the first one was us, our current one, right?
Right, five one one eight.
The only thought that struck me is the one we currently have is much, it, it is written much better. Than the one that the state has out there, I think. Uh, that, that was, that was what struck me when I read the, the top piece.
Yeah, what I like is the, the first paragraph and keeping with, there's, there's almost always a beginning paragraph in, in uh, your policies. Which almost br- they bring some heart to the policy and some purpose. Which is nice, yeah.
See in policy, isn't it?
Yeah, right, and the V S B A models, I mean, they're, they're not meant to do, they're meant to just give you the facts.
Yeah, I love that.
Something to start from and that's what it does, so, you know, like we've done in the past, I mean, my recommendation would be to take that, keep that first paragraph. And then do some comparison between what the, the V S B A model and what we have in our second paragraph and, you know. Uh, blend that a little bit. And then there's some cross-reference stuff that's out of date in our policy right now.
Right.
Um, that a couple of policies in the cross-reference section are no longer in policy, uh, locally. And then the uh, policy five one two five has a different name, student educational records, FERPA. So those just need to be updated.
And that's what the state piece, the, the cross-references is what the state piece brings.
Right.
So you'll marry those together and then we'll?
Then we'll do the first reading?
I think we can do the second one with that, with those changes, because I think if we keep that first paragraph, at least it keeps a little heart in. And then put the cross-references in that fit, and at least they're good now until we review again.
Yep.
Alright, good. Um, we've moved already the uh. Nine D advocate for the legislative change. At that piece. Uh, item ten, community engagement, recent community activities by board members. What do you got going on?
Okay, some coming up this week? Yeah, basketball.
Definitely have basketball.
We had um, another opiate conversation?
Yeah, that's nice, it's on the schedule, yeah.
Yeah, is the United Way one coming up, is it March fifth?
Um, I think it's later than that.
It's, no, it's March fifth.
Is it?
It's at four P M.
Here.
Here.
Yep.
Yeah. So that's one with the United Way and other, other than those few speakers, they're gonna talk about various approaches that have been successful, right? Remember who they are?
Uh, no, but one of them is um, out of Rutland.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Dream, I think it's called.
Uh.
Dream project.
Is it, it's Project Vision, isn't it?
Vision.
Something inspiring.
And the theme is neighborhoods too.
Yeah, right, right, well, the, the, the vision project of Rutland is pretty remarkable. The way they have sort of rescued some neighborhoods from total blight and, you know, being completely underwater and people like leaving. The area and, you know, creating a really fertile space for drug dealing. And, and they've really sort of come up with a way to stem that.
Right.
So I think there's gonna be some mission stuff going down.
So Chief Hebert, Chief Shurling, I think, is invited from Hamilton, so there'll be law enforcement.
Right.
Um, and I think they were also gonna try and get some of the um. Neighborhood captains who were doing the watch stuff in, in Winuski, I think it was last year. And when there was a rash of break-ins and so forth, I think they were gonna try and get some of those folks. And so they might be able to use that system that's already in place.
Yeah.
I thought one of the best outcomes of a lot, that opiate meeting that we had was not even related to the subject matter. But was a comment that was made about, and I think it was Deek that brought it up, she was reading in a classroom here and this is circling all the way back to her beginning.
Yeah.
That she was reading to a class, um, stopped, got to a point where she was starting to lose control. And using the mindfulness thought, brought the entire class to their seats, says it's time for mindfulness. Brought everybody back to their seats.
Yeah.
That was interesting, but what was really more powerful is the officer sitting on the side of me. His eyes lit right up, saying, you know, just a few words get all of these kids' attention.
Yeah.
And, and his eyes lit up saying, you know, it, it's not like you gotta push the subject, you can make some comments and the kids understand. So, it, the mindfulness seems to have taken root with the kids in pretty good shape now, if it can take root with some of the rest of the community and make a. Make a big difference, so. I thought that was pretty powerful.
Absolutely.
And then some of the police officers were in uh, the middle high school, uh, I think it was last, late last week and came in and practiced.
Oh, they did. Oh, good. I think that's, that's important. Um, and I didn't realize how important uh, until Officer Jackson had left after being the. School resource officer here for a long time and ended up in somebody's house on the beat. And the guy in the closet that he was after, because it was creating hate and discontent or something, looked up at him and said, I am so sorry, Officer Jackson. And he just, he knew him and he had that personal relationship, I think it makes a big difference.
Oh, that's huge, yeah.
That was huge.
By the way, um, did, did we get a replacement S R O? Did we get a new S R O or is that about to happen or?
Um, there is uh, there is somebody who was hired, I'm not sure it's been announced yet.
Okay, alright, but that's in the next procedure?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great.
Alright, any other community activities?
What's the mindfulness going in the community?
Uh, I missed the last one, I had something going on, but they're moving to uh. Senior Center for the rest of them, so.
It's, it's moving outside of Winuski, because I actually took a class in January. Um, I'm doing a um, learning how to evaluate infant and on. And so I'm part of this huge pilot program, but anyways, we started with mindfulness, so, and then I shared it. The school does it and I do it in the daycare, so.
Nice.
It's definitely starting to spread, which is really, really great to see, so.
I know, it helped me tonight transition from where I was to where I am, so.
We should go up to the State House and we should have them all practice mindfulness before they start their meetings. Maybe the Senate and, and the.
Senate House and Senate, committee, head committees?
Yeah.
Alright, so we get down to that point in the uh, agenda. Here we are. Regularly scheduled board meeting number at least one hundred and eight for Mr. Jay Lambert. Nine years. And I think, if I remember correctly, you've missed only one of those meetings and that was relatively recently due to hopefully a short-term issue.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a lot of, that's a lot of regular.
Very, very few meetings I've missed.
You're the Cal Ripken of school boards.
So if we add to that, at least three per year additional for budgets, minimally. Three more per year for, let's say, uh, special school board events, things to get invited to. And three or four other events attended by invitation from the school. So minimally, minimally, been here at the school with your school board hat on a couple hundred times, at least. Uh.
Probably.
I, I wouldn't think that would be too far exaggerating. I don't think that's saying that you've, see, uh. The saying you've seen incredible change in our school community is an understatement, to say the least, in the past nine years. Seen some highs, some lows along the way, still always coming back for the next round. Tonight being the, the last in the series. Um, in looking back on what I have witnessed, and that's only been in the past four years. Uh, we can be most thankful for your work on the facility side of things. Uh, incredibly depth, depth of work with Rebecca and her team to go through the facilities. Understand what we need to be done, setting out a long-term plan prioritized. Uh, for keeping us, you know, up to date on what should be done, so we don't have any near-term surprises. That's a severe thank you there. Uh, if we can continue down that path, uh, hopefully future focused and cost conscious, so we can stay ahead of these issues as we go. But we've got a good foundation based on the work that you did. Um, second item I would like to personally thank you for is a bit more difficult to articulate. Um, I started on the board four years ago, I remember thinking, what is he talking about? I'd hear.
You still do.
Well, you know, I'd hear, I'd hear Title sixteen, chapter nine, subchapter five, article three on hazing. And I'm thinking to myself, about the third time I heard this, I started writing them down. Because I'm thinking to myself, who can do this? And I'd go home and I'd put it into Google and sure enough. Subchapter five, article three is hazing. How did he do that? You know, I'm thinking to myself, alright, well, you know, there's something to be. But you've kept us on track and you've taught me a ton about Robert's rules in the process, so. You know, I, I thank you, I don't think I could uh, have gotten through learning as much as I have without. Jiminy Cricket on my shoulder helping along the way for sure. And for this, we thank you both as a board and I thank you personally for my time making it much, me able to be much broader in scope. Uh, in the end, we may not see you around this table, uh, but with the other activities that bring you to the school, boosters, sporting events, uh, homecoming preparations. And everything else, we'll most likely see you around these grounds forty, fifty times a year, at least. Uh, I'd also like to see you, we would also likely see you at one of the several citywide commissions, meetings. Uh, doing a wedding with your justice of the peace hat on. Uh, I guess, I would like to know how you managed to get thirty-six hours stuffed in every day. I just don't understand how you do that. But it'd take me that long to get it all done. Um, so it's not likely that we won't see you again, but most likely it will be, when I see you, it'll be, can I have ketchup, mustard, and onions on that hot dog? Where I'll see it. And in honor of your service to the district, as a small token of our appreciation and time and effort, along with the Golden Apple Award for uh. Community service, we greatly appreciate your uh, your time and your effort. Thank you very, very much.
It's golden apple, there it is.
Says, uh, I think I'm gonna show my age, you gonna help me with this? This is presented by Jay Lambert in recognition for your dedicated service on the Winuski School Board of Trustees. Uh, March two thousand five, February fifteen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No doubt.
Am I coming back in April to give you guys a little Robert's rules thing or did you find somebody? Nicole has nothing.
No, no, well, no, she has board meetings, I have board meeting nights.
It's up to you guys, I'm willing to do it.
Okay.
Well, I was thinking a little more even short-term and swearing in some of our, maybe our new, a new member.
You want me to come in March and swear on your members?
We may need to do that, cause we need a justice of the peace to do that, so. I don't know of a better one.
That would be kinda cool.
That would be cool.
Nice little transition between.
Alright, I'll plan to be in here next month.
Words of wisdom, man, what are you sending us?
I've, I've always, as my service as a board member, said, it's, it's been children. Taxpayers and everybody else. And, and that's really just been kind of my motto, is, is when you think of something, you know, how, how does this help the children in the district? Because the truth is, helping the children in the district for the viewing taxpayers helps the taxpayer. When children are well-educated, they will make tens of thousands of dollars more than a child who isn't. And school board members, especially in the state of Vermont, and we're usually up in the top two or three in the nation. Um, which is a credit to school board members here. Um, you know, our children are graduated very well-educated and statistically nationwide. Well-educated children, when they graduate, literally will make thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars more. Which gets generated into the U S economy. So, it's children first, you gotta balance out with the local taxpayer and try to help them, you know, and then there's everybody else, so. My words of wisdom, think about children and always put them first and you can never really go wrong.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when you do come in March, we won't make you stay till the end.
Okay.
That's.
Sounds good.
So, upcoming meeting dates, a couple of noteworthy ones here, Monday, Channel seventeen budget presentation. Uh, Sean and I will be doing that five twenty-five. February eighteenth, next Wednesday, community dinner, budget information presentation. Uh, worked with the city to work with having a dual presentation at the same time, so we can get a little more information out a little earlier. Um, than the night before the, the election. Then the annual information meeting, the Monday before, uh, town meeting day, the second, and then. Uh, town meeting day on uh, March third. And then our next regularly scheduled board meeting on the eleventh. We will have at least one new face around the table. With that, I would accept a motion to move into executive session.
So move.
All those in favor?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now in executive session.